Gotter, here. Gambino, here. Left?
Here.
Bates?
Here.
Callender and Grant are absent. We have a call.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th?
So moved.
And second?
Moved by Gotter, seconded by Gambino. Discussion. Call or roll please.
Gotter?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Uh, Councilor?
Uh, Mayor, that's a move we approve. Councilor, that was an act.
Second?
I'll take it, but...
Moved by Gambino, seconded by Bates. Any discussion? Call or roll please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
And Gotter?
Yes.
The motion is passed. Thank you. Um, the first item on our agenda is our 2016-17 audit report from our good friend. I guess you're not supposed to be a good friend or you was an auditor, but you are in for all this time.
Yes.
We don't need to be on these sits. We're sitting in room stand.
We've had a nice work working relationship over time. This year, I saw transitions in the city and, um, from my perspective, it was a smooth audit. Got to know Jeff a little bit and, uh, and I know there's been a lot of effort, uh, these last couple of months getting, uh, the additional records on the software and get that up and implemented and, uh, I'm all in favor of that. City will be more efficient. It did for this time, so it was good Jeff took the reins and moved forward and looking forward to next year. So, uh, yes, transitions for the city. The year end, you're moderately healthy. Um, I can take you to a clean opinion first of all. You see the clean opinion. I can give you a comparison of this year which is reflected in your numbers on page uh, four and five. This compares your 2000, year end '17 to 2016, both by the governmental and the business types. So, uh, you ended the year at the bottom on the governmental, the very first column with 6.8 million compared to 6.6 and of course, I'm rounding here for the governmental's. Business activities ended, uh, the position at 9.6 and prior year, 2016, that was 9.1 million. On page five is the revenues and expenditures comparison and if you go down about two-thirds of the schedule there, on the governmental side, you see the change in that position. I showed you governmental 417, 2006-07, uh, net of net revenue over expense compared to the previous year of 269.7. And the enterprise funds, uh, they did the year of a change in position of 169 thousand compared to 116. So both showed a little bit of an increase. The transfers reflect activity between the funds bringing and that's based on budget. Bringing down the change after transfers to 152, uh, more had swung over to governmental's, excuse me, enterprises from the governmental's. But I wanted to show, just point out the change in the funds before these transfers were being reflected there. So that's, um, that's positive. The assets are reflected, the assets and liabilities are more reflected in detail on page seven. I just want to point out this reflects your curves activity. We download from website which are for the city of Depot Bay sits and at this particular time in the liabilities, you see there's a net pension liability as of June 2017 according to the actuaries showing at 1.2 total.
I, where is that?
Okay, look at the liabilities there and it's first line up before after total, oh, before total liabilities, excuse me, net pension liability.
Ah, okay.
There you go. And it's listed by the governmental at 469, businesses 786 for total of 1.2. I don't have anything more to say. This is actuaries. This is, this is their area of expertise. That's where the city found that's up at June 30.
And yet again, there's nothing we can do about it between no more.
Yes, and I'm not the one to ask the question or provide answers. That's not my area. That's specialty.
We have someone from curves to come and speak to us. Do you have an interest in meeting here when that happens?
I...
Don't feel obligated. I only mean that as to be helpful if...
You know, I might send somebody.
Okay.
Somebody because we do get a lot of questions on curves and, um...
Okay, so we'll just make sure we let you know whenever you're coming.
Just please, yeah, let me know. I have somebody in my office who's more focused in on curves and we continually update the required disclosures plus down, download. There will be more disclosures in the future coming up, um, that will balloon up more as far as notes. This is, this is a time for him, but I, I think that's, that's good. You've got the first person. It's definitely, I'm glad to hear that. You know, the audit, uh, other than that, not other than that, it was just very, it was straightforward. Hurry came in, answered questions, Jeff and I spoke and, uh, it was, it was straightforward audit. I will, I'll let you, uh, page 21, we do make comments if we find there's more expenditures for budget purposes and we do comment on the general fund and the debt fund. Debt fund is $25 and capital out like a little bit over this year. In river renewal, there was a deficit fund balance. When that approved, we have to comment on that as well for disclosure. This is also disclosed in ordinary minimum standards in your back sheets as well. That is, you know, other than that, it, um, it was straightforward. Yeah, and it was nice, it was nice to see transitions and that didn't slow us down as far as being able to get the audit out. Again, hurry did step in and Jeff was available for any questions. I'll go back again, but certainly support is, is let you move forward. It wasn't fun, I'm sure of that and plus that's a new position for him. He just, he moved forward and it's definitely, it was definitely a good move. It was timely and I know you've got additional support.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'm glad to see city moving forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions? God, we're boring this year, aren't we?
I love it. That is, that's fine with me and I'm sure it's fine with you.
Okay. Well, we can't thank you enough really. You take good care of the city and we do appreciate it.
Well, we have, we've had good communication and I expect that to continue. If it comes out or thoughts of doing something on river, any questions, we're happy to take that phone call.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Do we have to accept the audit? Do we, you know, I don't think we usually do that. No?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sydney.
Yes, thank you.
Again, I'm so sorry you had to drive so far on a night like this.
You know, it just came up with Jeff. He said, well, we actually have an opening and, you know, I would prefer doing a year before we start the new year for whatever's going to be coming at us. So I just felt really fit there to do it.
Wow, that's great. Well, thank you so much and have a wonderful holiday.
Well, too.
All of you too. Thank you very much. Okay, reports of officers, boards or standing committees? I don't think we have any. You're just covering, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Public comments? No public, there's no public here. Yeah, well, we already discussed that. Okay. Unfinished business, proposed ordinance number 316. Is this a public hearing?
It can be, yes. We asked for public comments. I didn't hear any, so we'll open it up and see if we have any.
Okay, um, so this is opening a public hearing for ordinance number 316. An ordinance of, oh, wait, if I want to do this by title only?
Yes.
We need to move that first. Someone has to move that, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, I move we read ordinance number 316 by title only.
Second.
Moved by Gambino, seconded by Gotter. Discussion. Call or roll? Okay.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Gotter?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
The motion is passed. The hearing is open. Ordinance number 316, City of Depot Bay and ordinance, amending ordinance number 304, City of Depot Bay Harbor ordinance revising sections 2.000 Harbor Commission and 3.000 Organization of the Commission and declaring an emergency. Does anyone have any comment they wish to make about this proposed ordinance change? Okay. Oh, Lauren?
I would make just one comment and it can be revisited at a later date if need be. Regarding the structure of the commission, uh, it's my contention that we are not doing ourselves any favor or the Harbor Commission itself by restricting the membership of those that, uh, have a vested interest in the harbor to, uh, to...
You're not letting us correct it. It says no more than two of the regular membership can live outside the city of Depot Bay. We decided not to put any restriction on how we may be done there.
Great.
Well, I didn't read this one. I read the, uh, one that I had in my pocket. So my apologies. I draw my comment.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, that being the case, the public hearing is closed and if we want to, can't we do the second hearing right now?
We actually did a first reading last...
Oh, we did the first reading last week?
This is the second reading.
This is the second review, okay. So...
A motion.
Yes.
Mayor, I move we approve, uh, ordinance number 316.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Gambino, seconded by Bates. Can you guys get offended when I don't say mister?
No.
Okay.
I just think you didn't.
Okay. Okay, just get corrected. Uh, any discussion? Call or roll please?
Bates?
Yes.
Gotter?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Left?
Yes. The motion is passed. We don't have to move ordinance. Okay. Uh, new business. Every April, we have a joint meeting with the Winston County Board of Commissioners and they, um, sent us their letter. I don't understand this note on here, Jeff.
I got an email from Crystal that Commissioner Hutt is out on April 18th.
Oh.
And so we have April 11th or April 25th.
Okay. Does it cancel?
So they're both win series.
But they always go in those sorts.
So do we have a preference on?
Either one works for me.
One works for me. Okay, pick one. Okay, why don't we, if April 11th is all right, well, it's also another couple of weeks before it begins to get busier for you, so that's probably a good one.
Either one made contact with them and could have set up.
Okay. Now let's move on to proposed resolution number 466. Now this is a resolution, not an ordinance.
Right, yes.
Um, so, so I can just read it by title? Don't need a motion? Okay. This is a resolution approving and establishing a harbor vessel Christmas decorations policy, which I am going to let Robert speak to because it was his idea and I think it's really wonderful.
Okay, yeah, um, has everybody already read, uh, the cover letter, the proposed idea? Uh, basically they have full-time or permanent mortgage holders able to put up Christmas lights or, excuse me, holiday decorations on their vessels for the last or at any time, but for the consideration of this, it would be the last, basically two weeks or the last half of every December. And then it gives, the ordinance gives descriptions of how it would be, uh, resolved, well, how it would be enacted. And the city would absorb the cost of the electricity for that roughly two-week period. And Joey was able to figure out for me the example already, the, uh, idea, an average of what that money would be. We based it on last year's December bill and divided it in half. Then without Christmas lights, it came to $568 for all permanent mortgage holders. So this in effect would, uh, cost the city up to $568, thereabouts.
Plus the cost of the Christmas lights that were on the, because they get charged as well.
Um, you mean the Christmas lights the city put up?
No, I mean the Christmas lights that the mortgage holders put on their boats.
Electricity for it.
Yeah, the electricity.
Yes, but of course also keep in mind, I take a cancellation to that would be that not everybody, not all mortgage holders are going to have Christmas lights.
Yeah, that's true.
So we can guess that this would cost the city somewhere around...
I'd say $715.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the, uh, then we have the resolution, which I guess you can read.
Uh, do you, do council like me to read the entire resolution? Has everyone read the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, everyone has read it. Right, so, no, then what we really need is a motion, a motion to enact the resolution, right?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Can I read that on my own?
Yeah.
She's on mute.
You should do it proudly.
So moved.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay. Moved by Gambino, seconded by Gotter. Uh, any further discussion?
Yes. I think it's a good thing to try to encourage participation. It, uh, it's a popular thing in Newport, their little, mm, light parade that they have down there, the light vessels. I'm starting to say that I did very little, almost nothing for decoration this year at the office or on my post. The highway to hell is paved with good intentions. So, uh, with that said, would it be possible to, if an individual participated and chose not to take the, uh, affirmative, the electrical upgrade?
That would be awesome.
They could defer.
They could defer to deferral?
Defer to defer, yeah.
I, um, sure.
Yeah, I'm sure that could be done because we're going to have to read the meeting a second time.
Right. That doesn't, that's not an issue, is it?
I don't see where it would be an issue at all.
No, I think it's...
And if I may, is that it or? That was all. I guess for further discussion, obviously, we're going to have to let the mortgage holders know about this. So I figured like something in their electric bill or, um, some kind of posting on their boat to look at the webpage and we could put this on the webpage.
Or maybe we could even spring for a mail. To mortgage holders.
Sometimes there was competition with some of the ones in Newport. If that, maybe go down that road later or something.
I think maybe like in September, after the big, heaviest part of the season is over, we put together a really nice little mailing piece and we mail it, but by then hopefully we'll have an operational Harbor Commission, but even if we don't, that's not a big deal. I mean, we're, we have what, a hundred mortgage? How many mortgage holders do we have?
I really, uh, I have 82.
82, somewhere, yeah, somewhere under 100. So we can easily put a mailing together, run off a set of labels, right on. I would even volunteer to help the city staff put that together.
Is there, uh, email contact information for the mortgage holders? Seems like there is.
Yeah, about 90% I'm sure.
There's a cheaper way.
Yeah.
Don't have to spend any money on statements.
Yeah, except for the few that don't have email. I think we do want to make sure we get to them too, but, so, okay. Any further discussion? Call or roll please?
Okay, Gotter?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
The motion is passed.
You said that kind of things have really made Depot Bay, okay.
Well, the next resolution, I must start this by saying, again, I know I've said it about 20 times already, but I am just so proud of the, of the entire staff of Depot Bay, the office staff, the crew, everybody has worked so hard and so, they've all been so dedicated to getting the handbook finished and, and counselors do their piece and, look, here we are, okay? So, um, a resolution superseding in its entirety resolutions number 51, 195, 196, 213, 214, 217 and 399, resolutions establishing the City of Depot Bay employee handbook and amendments to said handbook. It is proposed that resolution 467 be adopted, establishing the newly presented City of Depot Bay handbook. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 467.
Do I hear a second?
No, second.
Moved by Gambino, seconded by, uh, what's her name again?
Mr....
Is there any discussion? Call or roll please?
Gambino?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Gotter?
Yes.
Yay, the motion, the resolution comes resolved.
So resolved.
Wow. And hopefully at the January meeting, we will be able to give to each councilor their very own copy of the newly minted employee handbook. And everyone should feel so proud about that. Just wonderful. Okay. It's going to be the shortest thing we've ever done.
No, we had one short. We had a correspondence.
I did, uh, receive a call today from Kevin Greenwood, uh, looking at Newport. He is, uh, working on the County Commons Visioning Committee and that is for the visioning of housing programs and things that were going to be done. And he's looking for volunteers to be on the committee for each city within the area. And, uh, I told him I would ask counsel if they have anyone they would like to appoint to that.
You know, my gut tells me that the chamber would be involved in this in some way. Whether there's a chamber person who...
He's good friends with us.
Could represent both the city and...
He's good friends. There he is.
Who is?
Juror, Mr. Green.
Yeah, but, okay.
You're not going to tell yourself?
No, I want someone who will attend the meeting instead of me. We work back to council is my goal here. It does not have to be a counselor, we can appoint anyone, right? If they didn't ask for a specific one.
I was, I would say that's one that interests me. I don't think it interests all of us, but I'm on several different things right now and I really don't want to...
Do you want to give up something else and...
No. Okay, I like the way you said it.
I know, it's not mainly the whole level we're doing this year, it's just tough.
What kind of time commitment? Any of...
The first meeting is going to be January 8th at 5:30 and it'll last approximately two hours and it would involve a commitment through, looks like March, according to each, um...
Sorry.
First phase and then there's phases after that. And you would probably be meeting once a month and that gets to your season.
As much as I would like to, I...
I would say I do have an interest in it.
Do you? Would you like to?
I would be willing to.
Okay. Is that counsel?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Consider yourself appointed.
Good.
Good. Okay. And you'll remind us while we all forget that we...
Yes, I'll keep you all updated.
Any additional correspondence?
No, I am still working with, I'll see Arizo for the, uh, March talk on the tsunami, what they call the tsunami show.
Yes.
And so, uh, I've been in touch with Josh at the fire hall and he's on board with it. There is some interest from Newport, Winston City and Toledo at this point also joining us, so...
So maybe we can use the Glanville Beach room.
I've already talked to Josh.
Yeah.
He says that would be no problem.
That's a good sign.
And if, if we get enough interest from the community, we may be able to give her meetings.
Right, if you want it, the community hall on there.
Yes.
It's a tsunami zone.
The community hall?
You betcha.
Yeah. That's appropriate.
You're not appropriate. I see questions on the floor.
Okay. Any further correspondence?
No. I'm just going to say if you're down there and it starts to heat, it's time to enter the air.
Okay, city staff report.
Okay, update on, uh, Mr. Alton Hoffman. He has the property at 118 South Cory down here, the one that we, uh, waited till the 25th of November was declared in existence. That's moving forward. Got an email from Corey Clay, um, who is, works in Pete, get his office. So, um, he's putting together the court hearing date that we will have here like we did with the property across the highway there. So that's moving forward and, uh, he's also going to have maybe something by next, the first meeting of the year or two that I could have the hassle, let him know more information on time. SWAC update, so that's, uh, it's kind of solid waste. They're getting... Um, SWAC update, so that's, uh, kind of solid waste, um, they're getting into the, uh, understanding of how the, the, some of the, like, recyclers happening with paper and, well, paper's a new one, you know, plastic is already being denied by China, paper's next, and, um, they're going to work with all the haulers in the area of EQ is to find out what they can do to audit their, um, right now recyclables. So, there may be a change, and placards put on for new containers to see what they will take and what they won't. But, uh, we'll know way ahead of time far too many big changes, so, it's pretty sad. I think what's happening, what I'm kinda hearing is, it's probably gonna end up where recycling's gonna be, there's gonna be a fee. That's probably what's gonna end up. So, um, they're still looking for ideas and coming up, but they knew this was happening, but no one really did anything, and now it's like the first of the year and the switch is off, so. Anyway, uh, there's another meeting, I've been, um, asked to invite any council members if they wanna go to the next SWAC meeting, it's gonna be on the ninth of January. Um, a lot of this discussion with the, you know, um, issues that are coming up with paper and plastics.
Have we set a date for the joint meeting with council and?
Uh, with, with?
And Glanion Beach water sewer, or sewer?
Oh, um, for, oh, no, not for the, for the, going to be sanitary.
Because I wanna make sure that that?
Coincides with?
Well, I just wanna make sure that we don't give up dates that we have offered to them.
Oh, sure.
Right, it's, um, I've given them two dates at toward the end of January.
Okay.
And I haven't heard that.
The, the last week, yeah, 'cause the last week is the twenty-second, and it gets into the twenty-eighth, and there's four days left of January, so.
You understand what I'm saying, I just wanna make sure.
We leave those dates open, right. So, this is gonna be on the ninth, and then, uh, so our, our meetings are gonna be, uh, looks like the second of January and the sixteenth.
Those are our regular?
Those are our council meetings.
Those are our regular councils, right.
And then, so, um, anyway, I, I know Demi Caliber's interested in, in attending that meeting, so I'll give her information, she wants to be on the recycling. She's, uh, interested in getting updated on this, so. The, the next thing I have is the stairs at the community hall, um, I'm having, uh, fabricated, so actually prior to the, uh, my polywalled application, um, galvanized stairs with coat railings and the steps are to coat, and the tread's gonna be, um, very safe to walk on, rather than the slippery wood that we have now, the wood just doesn't seem to hold. Before, we had replaced treads and a few railing out here, but now it's where the, the so dilapidated that they're not safe, so. It's in the budget, um, galvanized, I've talked to a lot of the crew and, and with the railings and some of the galvanized, um, things we're having around town seem to be holding up real well, it looks like a good option for there. Um, we're still looking into next year's budget to get the, uh, sidewalk and the road we developed where the guardrail is, to allow sidewalk on the other side of the guardrail and retaining wall and whatnot, but for now, the stairs are pretty important. So, um, I'll get a cost estimate by next meeting for the stairs. Um, and then, another thing is the property across the way, I don't know if you noticed it, Mr. Crandall, who lives in California, um, just had a huge pile of wood, probably about, um,
I saw that.
Huge.
I wonder if he knew about it.
I don't think he does know about it, but it's, it's locking, it's, I don't know how many, um, yeah, it's, it's hard to say.
Does he have email?
He does, yeah.
Take a picture, an email on the picture.
Yeah, I, I was, I've got a photo already of it, so I will send him, because he's actually off our, um, radar right now because he is divided by all his stuff, now Mr. Martin has yet to, but he's still on with the county and getting the permits and everything, still just a quiet mark, but I will let Mr. Crandall know.
Let Mr. Crandall know that he had not, does not have access to his yard right now. To his property.
Yeah, there's several, what, loads of, of wood there, so. Anyway, that's about it, I'll just, uh, every, the crew's busy right now, we're in the meters and, uh, kinda in the holiday mode of, uh,
Cook Street.
Cook Street is completed, uh, tilts, what we've done is we've put a new water line in, and we pieced them up together, we didn't have to get a contract, well, we had damn price construction costs with, uh, tying into the lines and putting in the meters because we had to hurry to do it. But it's all brand new, we're, we're down to, uh, just painting now, putting in a, uh, uh, drain system for the stormwater up later this, this spring, but right now, it was probably, the, the guys think it was twenty gallons a minute with all the little leaks that were on the old line, so that adds up, and, uh, it's all brand new now, and, uh, new meters, uh, probably half are new, it's all completely, as of yesterday. So, it was a lot of, a lot of trouble, a lot of getting it all tied in, but the neighbors were nice.
Good.
Dealing with us because it was on and off, on and off, and, um, they've been great, so it's gonna tie, it's, it's different than their Coast Avenue because it was one huge big, you know, all, all at once, this, this one was kinda pieced all together, so.
Okay.
Little tough, but, that's it.
Jeff?
Uh, okay, as Sydney has mentioned, we, the vision software is coming along fabulous. Uh, we're cash management is on board one hundred percent, we're gonna be running utilities site by site this time around, and then the next cycle will be all on vision. And that will be great. We've still got some, uh, data to enter from July through October, we're looking on that. And then, it's gonna be pretty much vision.
There you go.
And that's, that's a good thing because I still don't have any of that stuff.
And now you don't have to.
Exactly.
And all the business licenses went out, and the new software, all the payments are coming in through cash management, through the new support, nothing else.
Corey, good job.
All there.
Good.
Uh, I also had a chance this month to meet with the other coastal city managers at lunch, and it was a very informative group. Uh, they made some heads up on different things, um, and I now have a network that I can speak with as I come up with problems. One of the things they are focusing on is Measure Seventy-One that went through the legislature, and what that does is that allows them to meet every year for a period of time. And so, they, the, um, Cascade West Council of Governors does not feel that we're getting, uh, one hundred percent of what we need as far as support from leading Oregon cities, and so they're looking at a small coalition from the Cascade West who are putting together to advocate for our needs. And so, that's going to be moving forward as we go. Also, they did mention that, um, they're still working on the housing, low-income housing grants, and, uh, getting a lot of support there from the various cities, so that's gonna be a good thing. But it was good to meet them all, uh, some of them have been there forever, and some are new like I am, so it's, it's a good mix of people. Also, want to, um, remind, and we're already starting to get some applications, but we have a lot, uh, commissions, committees that have explorations coming up in the December. We also still have, we will be looking at applications for the council meeting at the January second, on January second. We do have one application right now, uh, we've got interest from others, I haven't seen the application yet, so, still have things to talk about.
But maybe after the January meeting, we'll have a full?
We, we should be able to, and do something there. Um, also, the one thing Brady did mention was, he did, um, order a AED unit to go. And city, I, we're getting city roll.
Yeah, we're gonna, now, probably try, try the bar food.
And I think, looking at next year's budget, maybe get one for either the waste plant or water plant. It's, it's a valuable.
Eventually, you need to get one in each.
Yes. Other than that, it's been a busy time, it's been a hack-a-time, and I have to say that the staff and employees at Depot Bay are awesome. They're one percent awesome. Good, good job, um, so, my hat is off to them, and I thank the council for working with them under him, though. Yep.
Okay, council comments. Laura?
Happy holidays, one and all, but, uh, I had, I did have a question for Brady.
Sure.
Um, what do you hear from the, the manufacturer of the, the, uh, big squeeze?
Oh, that's actually, um, the cake, the, the Easy-Bake Oven. It, it, it's actually, um, being made to, because they, they customize it to fit in certain, their packages, so it will, uh, it's in the process, we're, they're working on actually some of the O and M parts of it out, operation and the maintenance manual that comes in. They've, uh, they, um, uh, fire engineering is putting together all the drawings and everything, so it's gonna be, uh, probably by the time the machine shows up, they'll have all their drawings for installation. Our guys are gonna work with, uh, Western States and just do all the mechanical stuff and the fabrication on our end, and, uh, Western States will have all the electrical installed, and I think it's great. Now, part two is the drawing in that if it becomes a Class A product, we're gonna have to get a gas line in and do all that later, but, uh, right now, it's, uh, it's on schedule.
On schedule.
Great.
Well, I couldn't remember what that schedule was, but.
It was, yeah, probably after January, they'll start giving us times and dates for delivery and stuff like that.
As far as preparation of the site, is there anything required beyond, uh, concrete pads to?
For the, yeah, maybe an awning over that, so we can keep rainwater out of the product, because we don't want it to get wet, but, um, just working with, um, I don't think it's sanitary on the dump boxes and designs and things like that, but, uh, that's all stuff we're working with, uh, on the drawings, so we make sure these pads are the right size, because the area is there, we just wanna get down to the final, like, where you drink, we have the drains designed, the pipe's already in, we need to get it tied in and the pads in, so. Okay?
All great things. So far, so good. My turn.
Your turn.
Uh, I'd like to thank staff and council for an excellent year, uh, looking forward to a, uh, a new year that will be as rewarding as this year has been, I think we accomplished a lot. And, uh, so, thank you, everyone, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy Holidays, we'll see you next year.
Yeah, truly.
I think I'd say, Happy Holidays, or however you wanna put it, to everybody, it's been fun, well, it's been interesting.
Actually, I think, there has been a lot of fun, it has been some fun, so. That's it?
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the job you've done, for the job you're doing, and for the job you will do in the coming year. We are.
Emphasis on the will do.
No, it's a great group, I have, I, I just have no qualms at all. Have a wonderful rest of the holiday season, and I'll look forward to seeing everybody on January second. The new year is adjourned, twenty-five minutes, exactly.